All right, I think we're up. Welcome to our Mesa City Council meeting for the morning of Thursday, September 12th. All of our council is present in the chambers this morning. Item 1A on our agenda for this meeting is a presentation and update on the 2025 Employee Wellness Program. Ladies, thank you. We're looking forward to hearing this presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. Teri Overby, HR Director. I have with me Jan Ashley, who is our Employee Benefits Administrator. Jan is going to start with a presentation on the 2025 Employee Benefit Changes and Updates to our Plans, and also give you some updates to our wellness programs and our Wellness Center. So I'm going to go ahead and turn the time over to Jan, and she will begin our presentation.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here. We appreciate it. I'd like to give you some highlights of our 2025 Wellness and Benefit Programs. Our current programs that are in place with our respective third-party vendor and administrators will continue in 2025. This will include Cigna for our Medical and Prescription Drug Programs, which also has Med Impact, Vibrant RX, and Paid Health providing services on the prescription drug side. Delta Dental of Arizona will continue to provide our dental programs. VSP will provide our Vision Care Insurance Programs. Employee Assistance Programs are provided by Comp Psych. Health and Wellness Dependent Care FSA Programs are provided by Navia Benefits. Life and Accidental Death and Dismemberment Insurance is through MetLife, our insurance company for those benefit programs. New York Life provides our Business, Travel, Accident, and Commuter Life Insurance Programs for full-time employees. Short-term Disability Programs, which are voluntary programs for employees to select, administered by UNUM and insured by UNUM. Our Health and Wellness Center has a new administrator in place currently under implementation, Premise Health. And then our Mesa Wellness 360 Programs continue to have the WebMD Technology Platform as the basis of those programs being delivered to employees. So next year, our benefit program levels will continue to be comprehensive and competitive in all three of our medical and dental prescription drug programs, and also our Vision Care Programs as well. In the medical programs, there'll be no changes in deductibles, co-pays, co-insurance, or medical insurance maximum out-of-pocket expenses by plan. There will, however, be one slight adjustment to the retiree members in our retiree medical programs who have our city's Medicare Part D Prescription Drug Program. These members will see a reduction in their Medicare Part D Prescription Drug out-of-pocket maximums in 2025, and that reduction will be to $2,000 per person or individual per year. And that's a reduction from $2,500 if they're currently in the Choice or the Basic Plan, and $3,575 if they're currently in the co-pay plan. So those maximums will be reduced, which will be enjoyed by retirees in the 2025 plan year. We then get to dental plan enhancements that are proposed to be in place and are currently under implementation with Delta Dental of Arizona. These have all of a focus on prevention and including services in all three plans, whereas somewhat in the past, some of these services have only been available in one or two of the plans. Now they'll be available in all three plans. That includes that the number of cleanings, preventive cleanings that can occur for a person per year will be moved up to three, currently sitting at two. It will also include that periodontal treatment will be in all three plans as a basic service, whereas it's currently sitting as a major service in two of the plans. So it will move into basic services and be allowed to be covered under all three plans. We'll also be adding the latest enamel improving and gum maintenance treatments to coverage, and improving the availability of analgesia and sedation services along with nitrous oxide services across all age groups and all plans to help with pain alleviation and fear alleviation that might arise in the dental provider environment. These enhancements are in addition to a special healthcare needs benefit enhancement that was put in place April of this year that was allowing up to four dental cleanings per year and other patient accommodations in dental offices for special needs patients. Our Health Flexible Spending Account Plan will increase its competitiveness and compliance with regard to maximum allowable deferrals and rollover amounts that are available in the plan. So the Health FSA Plan right now has a maximum deferral of $3,050 per year. That will increase or improve to $3,200 in 2025. The rollover maximum, which is a protection for members on forfeitures of plan amounts that they have not been able to use during the course of the plan year, that rollover amount has now moved up to $640 per person, per account, per year, and that's a move from $610, which is where it's sitting right now. So those new maximums will be available for people to look at in their open enrollment activities and choose what they want to do election-wise for those plans. Medical premium rates will have premium increases for both the city and almost all active and retired employees in calendar year 2025. For active employees, the basic medical plan premiums will no longer be 100% funded by the city contributions. Rather, employees will see the introduction of a modest premium of $9 per month, or $4.50 per paycheck, for single coverage, and $20 per month, or $10 per paycheck, for family coverage. The Choice Medical Plan members will experience the same amount of increases in their plan premium rates next year, and co-pay medical plan members will see $13 a month for single coverage and $41 a month for family coverage increase in their medical plan premium rates. These increased amounts for employees do impact employee paychecks, but they can be somewhat offset by the wellness credits that we have, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later on in the presentation. And employees and spouses are eligible to, if they've achieved 1,500 points in earnings program, in the wellness programs each year, they're eligible for some wellness credits to be paid to them the next year. And those wellness credits amount to $200 per person who's achieved that point category for the entire year, paid in pay period installments. So it's somewhat of a little bit of an offset against the fact that they're going to have premium increases on the medical plan side of the equation. For our retirees, monthly premium increases are $10 to $20 per month for the retiree basic plan, $19 to $37 per month for the Choice Plan, and $36 to $64 per month increase for the co-pay plan. Now, you might ask, what are some of the financial considerations that we took into account to come up with these and develop these rate increase amounts? Specifically, the Employee Benefit Trust Fund balance forecasts signal for us to approximately have a 6% rate increase across active plans and an 8% rate increase across retiree plans. The most significant contributors to these trend increases can be found primarily in our prescription drug utilization of specialty drugs that are not otherwise eligible for cost avoidance measures, which we do provide those services into the plan, and significant impact that we've seen on the uptake of relatively new GLP-1 drugs that help with diabetes, cardiac, and weight-related conditions management. But these drugs come at a high monthly cost to the plan and somewhat to the member, and to the plan for hundreds of members, not a very small population, as is the case in the specialty drugs. So all of those taken together contributed to the decisions to have the premium rate increases be as they have been suggested.
Jan, just quickly give an example of some of the specialty drugs that you mentioned to me, kind of what those prices are.
Yeah, specialty drugs that are not eligible for cost avoidance are generally in the area of $12,000 to $15,000 a month sort of cost structure. And over the course of the year, that's several, several thousand dollars of expense that goes into the plan. It depends upon the drug itself. It depends upon the frequency with which the member needs to use that drug, and it depends upon how long that drug has been in the market and what sort of other competitors are out there in the marketplace from the big pharmaceutical companies. So there's a lot of things that drive it, but it's not unusual to see $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 worth of expense hitting the plan for these sorts of drugs. The GLP-1 drugs that are mentioned as being high utilization, they're in the vicinity of $1,000 to $1,500 a month of potential total expense that's shared between the plan and employees. Some can be a little bit less expensive than that, but it's not in the hundreds category. It is in the low thousands category.
Yes, Mr. Freeman.
Jan, thank you. I think in a prior meeting you mentioned that the cost for specialty drugs is more expensive than generic drugs in our programs that we have today. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Generic drugs are much more cost-effective across the board in all pharmacy benefit programs. Specialty drugs come with price points that are taking account of the fact of the innovation that's involved in putting them to market, the amount of time that is involved in getting them FDA-approved, the number of clinical trials that go on, et cetera. So there's a lot of expense on the side of the big pharmaceutical companies to get those drugs in the marketplace. True, they bring it to market with a very high price point, but generic drugs are traditionally in a very low price point category, yes.
Okay. And I think if I remember right, also, that the number of employees that use specialty drugs, I mean, the cost to deliver that drug and the cost to the benefit program is very high compared to generic drugs again.
Absolutely, yes, it is.
All right, thank you.
And it's for a relatively small population.
Small population of those using the specialty drugs.
Whereas we have a very high population that would be using generic drugs, but it's sort of volume versus cost that makes the difference there.
Yeah, and I see there's quite a differential on rate increases, I mean, even for retirees on the co-pay and Choice Plans.
Right. The co-pay and the Choice Plans are our richest benefit plans, the co-pay plan being the richest. It has a number of different co-pay amounts, like five or six different co-pay amounts, but other than that, there are no deductibles in that program, and all the rest of the coverage is covered at 100%. So the member has a relatively low out-of-pocket liability in that plan, but to pay for that, the plan pays all the rest of it, so that's why the premiums are as high as they are.
Yeah, I was just advocating for retirees, because if your co-pay is between $36 and $64 annual or per month increase, that could be a significant hit to a budget.
You are correct, yes.
To plan for that.
That could be. So retirees will need to take a look at, is that the best plan for them to be in?
Okay. Thank you.
This slide does show the increases which Councilmember Freeman was referring to. They're a little bit more than what we've seen in past years, but not dramatically more. So that's a good place for us to be, et cetera. The next slide has information about one of our most rewarding of our benefit programs for 2025, and that's our Mesa Wellness 360 Program and our Health and Wellness Medical Center Activities and Programs. These programs are leading edge, they're robust, they're engaging, and they're very popular with employees and their eligible families. A core highlight in 2025 will be the ongoing quality accessible primary and preventive care services available free of charge from contracted medical professionals with our new administrator, Premise Health, at our Health and Wellness Center. The center is available to all medical plan participants, both active and retired employees, and their covered family members covered in medical programs. And this is what it means for them. It's a whole-person approach to care with longer appointment times, skilled and well-liked providers and staff, a comprehensive medical record technology system, and even more enhanced concierge-like referral coordination and follow-up service for patients. So it's the best of the best, I've got to tell you. Even more exciting is a planned location change, which will happen in the first part. The slide that's up now is what I've just briefly gone over as to what the Health and Wellness Center is all about, et cetera. So let's go to the next slide about our proposed location change for the Health and Wellness Center. Planned for early 2025, we don't have a specific date as yet, but we'll be moving from the current Gilbert Road location in Mesa to the newly remodeled or about to be finished on the remodeled city-owned building at Hibbett and First Avenue. It's south of Main in the downtown Mesa area. The square footage expansion will allow us over several years to provide opportunities for patient services and capacity expansion. So very, very impressive that we're able to support that sort of activity. This building will be a thoughtful new addition to downtown Mesa's vibrant and inviting buildings and services, and it will allow us, the city, to operate this wellness center for the benefit employees and retirees and their families for years to come. This current slide is a rendering of the potential interior of the newly remodeled center. Modern, soothing palette, plenty of space, able to accommodate. Why did you grin, Mr. Brady?
They're just for wellness, mental wellness.
All right, okay. Yes, very nice decor and architectural rendering that's proposed for that location. So now let's take a look at what the 2025 Wellness Program will look like. It will go forward with very similar benefits and opportunities and rewards and incentives that we have in place in 2024. So it will be open to all employees and also to spouses of employees who are in our Mesa healthcare programs. And it's open for employees to participate in events, activities, coaching, information, gathering, and potential rewards. So those who are enrolled in the medical programs who participate in the wellness program are able to earn points up to 1,500. 1,500 points would be the maximum for specific earnings, and then they can get all the way up to 2,500 points for some other high achiever earnings as well. So they can get six $50 debit or gift cards for a total $300 value, and both the employee and spouse can participate and achieve those sorts of rewards and earnings. Each debit card requires you to earn 250 points by participating in the various activities, which, as I've mentioned, has a strong focus on preventive screenings and other sorts of services that you engage in, as well as other activities and events, steps counting, exercise programs, et cetera, and participating in webinars and events that give you more information and/or coaching sessions, et cetera. If a person achieves the 1,500 points and those $300 worth of gift cards at the same time, they'd also get a wellness credit achievement that would be paid to them the next year, which, as I referred to earlier, is a possible offset of some of the costs that they will be incurring for their premiums in the medical plan and/or any of the other benefit programs as well. And that credit is $200 per person, per year, paid in pay period installments, starting in the year after in which it was earned. So 2025 credits will be paid in 2026, et cetera. Next slide. The open enrollment period for this year, for 2024, for 2025 programs, starts on October 7th and goes through October 21st. You'll note that's a little change, that's a Monday to Monday, a Monday to two Mondays later. We normally start on a Wednesday and go to a Wednesday, but we're changing it up this year, doing it Monday to weekends, two Mondays later. Inside Mesa, we'll have all the benefit links for eBEN Mesa, which is our enrollment platform that employees and retirees use to engage in their enrollment activities. Our website, our Employee Benefits website, will have all of the open enrollment guides, the 2025 plan document, SBC, Summary Benefit Descriptions, other required documents, and then communications on how to do everything and anything. Passive enrollment, which is how it always is, except for our FSA plans or account plans, which means healthcare or dependent care spending accounts, you do need to actively enroll in those programs each year. That's not driven by us so much, it is driven by IRS regs that you must do that every year. The Wellness and Benefits Fair, we try to do as soon as possible after the open enrollment period starts. So we're doing it Tuesday, October 8th, at the Mesa Convention Center from 8:00 to 1:00. We will have our normal computer lab environment with assisted enrollments available. The theme for the fair is a Wellness and Benefits Expedition theme, where we're hoping for people to join the adventure and support the health and wellness journey for themselves and their families. The fair will include assisted enrollments, flu shots, body composition testing, chair massages, appointments for mobile unit screenings, including MAM, mammograms, and POP prostate screenings, benefit plan vendors, city department information booths, employee network vendors, information giveaways, raffle prizes, food and beverage trucks from 7:30 a.m. So it is planned to be an event that nobody wants to miss. Including yourselves, council members, I do invite you to come to the fair on that day and enjoy the festivities as they proceed.
I heard body composition testing, I did not hear pizza party.
No, you didn't hear pizza party, although you never know what those food trucks might have available out on the plaza.
I'm just saying.
All right. So time for any questions, if you do have them.
Mayor, real quickly. One of the most significant benefits of being a city employee is our benefits plan. It is, Jan has done an amazing job over many years to really craft this plan so that it has tremendous value for our employees, as well as trying to keep the costs under, manage the costs as much as we can. As you can imagine, as far as inflation concern and rising costs, healthcare is kind of the leading, you know, that increase, and so we're trying to manage those costs as best we can. And one of the ways that we continue to explore ways to manage the cost, and she mentioned it throughout her presentation, is really creating the incentives for employees to take advantage or take responsibility for their own care, and looking to help them, give them the tools, the information to manage their health, whether it's through webinars or classes or different types of testing. We think we're very much committed to helping our employees be the best of themselves and taking care of their health and providing all the opportunities they can. And I think one of the, over time, along with those incentives, you saw the financial incentives, the credits to their health benefits, but also just, I will tell you, the Wellness Center is by far one of the most popular programs the city has ever offered, and we are very excited to bring on a new provider, and Jan led that way in that process. It was difficult for us to imagine what it would be like to move from the previous provider who'd been with us 12 years, 12 years or so.
Ten.
Ten, 10 years.
Nineteen.
And then to go out into the market. And when we did this 10 years ago, and we were looking for providers to come and provide this kind of unique service just to city employees, we only got a handful of interested parties. To this round, it was significant. It is the trend, right? Major employers, this is what they do. We were glad to be kind of on the leading edge of that and to attract what I would consider world-class care that we're going, hopefully, we anticipate getting from Premise. And I think our staff's excited about it. We were able to carry over many of the staff from the previous vendor that were very popular, I guess the way to say it, with our employees, and retain them to come onboard with this new provider. So we're very excited about Premise working with us, and frankly, the interest of our employees to continue to have the care provided by the healthcare providers, the individuals that they've come to know over the many years. And so we're very excited about that. And being able to go, so that's transitioning now, that contract was up, and so we needed to make that decision. The facility, we're really excited about that. We have the location there at Southern and Gilbert. It's worked very well for us over these many years, but that lease is coming up, and frankly, we're just outgrowing it. We've had, you know, the popularity of the program, and it's kind of nice to be able to go now from a facility that we've had to lease again for the last decade or so, now to a building that we own and that we can make the improvements and know that that'll be our long-term commitment. And it does give us, at some point, it will give us opportunity to kind of expand or consider expanding some of the programs they've offered now, just because of the footprint of the building, we will be larger. So we're very excited about the opportunity to provide these health benefits to our employees. We talk about compensation and what keeps employees, those that have the experience of using our health benefit programs, using our wellness programs, and they've come from somewhere else, they recognize that that is a huge part of their compensation of being a city employee. So we're very excited that we can continue to be kind of best-in-class in offering this to our employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Council questions on this? Go ahead, Mr. Freeman.
Do you have a question? So, you know, having participated in the Employee Benefit Program for quite a few years, I appreciate it, and probably about my 40th year doing that, but I've seen it mature and grow all throughout the years. And I think the Employee Wellness Center that we have is phenomenal, and I remember going on when it was, going there when it was first started, there were not all the services provided, and I think a breakdown of services, it's not really listed all that's available here at the Wellness Center, but I think it's important that that's communicated to employees as well as retirees so that they know they can go there and get the services needed without having to go to their PCP or other. I do like the movement from Gilbert and Southern location to our central location to a city-owned asset, and hopefully it'll save us money over the years. But more importantly, employee health and benefits is so important in our city. What do we employ, about 4,700 employees? And I know that not all take advantage of our benefit program, but those that do find that it's very well-run, and I guess one of the things that concerns me is especially drugs, the cost in those, that drives up the cost for everybody else to participate in the programming. I don't know if I'm correct on that, but I see that the overall cost, especially drugs, is extremely high.
It is, yes.
So.
It's a challenge that we continue to focus on very much.
And I know you're very good at that, Jan, and I appreciate that. I think other than that, I just love the wellness program. I'm not a player in it yet, but you've challenged me to do that.
Yes.
Body composition? You can do the body composition?
Yeah, let's do that.
All right.
You're going to sponsor the pizza party?
Yeah, right after the body composition.
But with that, I think the overall program for our employees is phenomenal, and that's one of the driving factors that we have retention in our employees. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Freeman.
Jan?
Yes. The retiree program is still fairly new, right? It's, didn't, no, we've been offering it for?
It's not new. We've been offering it for many, many years. What's new is the eligibility provisions for the retiree program were changed last year to allow more eligibility in the future.
To utilize the Wellness Center.
Okay, I see.
Benefits program. Health and Wellness has been there for many.
Yes, yes.
And it is evaluated separately because just looking at the cost of that program versus active employees too. So it's a pretty good deal for our retirees, but what they're also speaking to, at one point when we had the Wellness Center, when we first started it, it was for active employees only. And then, you know, as those employees continued to go, were going, and then they were retiring...
And then, you know, as those employees continued to go, were going, and then they were retiring, they were like, kind of getting, not kicked out, but denied access. So then we said, okay, well, if you've been going there and you get, you retire, then we opened it up. We were just, we were really trying to maintain the experience of the Wellness Center, and we didn't want to overwhelm it. And so we were trying to be, because it's, it's not, it's an experience where the doctors and medical professionals, they sit down with you and it's a, it's a wellness check. It's not just, you're here for a cough or cold and they just treat that. It's a, it's a conversation. So we're, we're always trying to manage utilization, the quality of it, but now we've gotten more comfortable, they've convinced me, we're now opening it up for retirees.
And we opened up to all retirees and their covered family members July 1st of '23.
That was a big deal.
Maybe that was.
Yeah, that's the big deal.
The family scope, that was the big change, which was huge for the city. So do you have an idea of, like, our retirees, what percentage or?
Are you?
I'm not sure what the percentage of retirees is, but I know altogether, we have over 15,000 people potentially eligible to use the Medical Center. And we have, over the course of the last 10 years through today, there have been as over 8,000 patients have become a patient there or at least attended the Medical Center once.
Highly utilized.
Yeah.
And the last question is, if you go international, does it, you get coverage or is it best to?
The, the health plan?
The health plan.
Yeah, the, the health plan does not provide international coverage, but you're able to collect your costs and, and file a claim through your Cigna medical plan when you get back, depending upon how it was, how the treatment was received. If it was emergency care, then that would be at regular paying benefit levels. If it was not emergency care, if it was out-of-network care, so to speak, yes, it would be at out-of-network benefit levels, which would leave fair amount of liability with the patient, but yes.
And Jan, they could provide access to the Wellness Center through the virtual assistance, right?
Yes, yes, which is done through MD Live, through our Cigna program, yes.
So they'd have that option.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Frankie?
Just curious, is the contract up anytime soon? I don't remember with, as far as the overall Cigna plan, when is that?
Not anytime soon. It's in, within the next two to three years, we will have a renewal opportunity, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
I just have a quick question about the Wellness Center. Thank you for your presentation, by the way, is having, not having been here for 40-plus years, being fairly new. Was it started because of the service that you, the added service to employees, or was it started as a cost-saving?
Yeah, no, you hit it all right on point. We started this as a program recognizing that utilization of even, you know, employees going for primary care, preventative care was, this has now been over a decade ago, as we looked at those statistics, it was very low. And of course, we were seeing increasing costs in our healthcare, our health benefits costs. And what we saw was that we were really paying a premium for a lot of critical care, the hospitalizations, things that were like, okay, these could have been prevented. If there were some programs in place that we could get to those employees early, but we recognized a lot of them weren't going, having medical doctor checkups or their families. And we said, okay, let's look at a model where we can make it convenient, accessible, and something that is, we can promote as, you know, that we kind of have a very much strong involvement in, so we can be supportive of it. We were not telling employees, employees that were already continuing to go to their primary care provider, absolutely, you know, like, great, keep doing that. This was kind of intended to help capture another part of our employee base. And over time, it has become so successful that we have seen, early on, we've had experiences where individuals who did not have a primary care provider but were coming here, and through this kind of new model of really a holistic look at the patient, our providers were catching things early on and identifying things that could have been very serious later on. And so that's where we started. And then, and the convenience and just getting more of our employees in front of a healthcare provider was our measure of success. Now, recently, Jan's coming to me saying what we are seeing, Jan, tell them kind of where we're seeing now, that utilization is helping us to mitigate increasing costs, right?
Yes, but it, it's somewhat overcome by the fact that the prescription drug program.
But for, but for all these specialty craving, the ones that get advertised and everybody hears on the TV.
Yes, yes.
But otherwise, we were starting, the utilization was starting to pay back for us.
Yes, yes.
It was, yes.
Yeah. So again, for us, I guess the way it's, it's both prevented, it's, the employees feel valued because we can provide this just for them. And what we're seeing is when they do that and they're seeing their doctors regularly, and it's convenient for employees to go from work, to go to these locations, we are identifying things early on. And even through our wellness programs, whereas for diabetes awareness, through better nutrition, we are, we're convinced that we're, we're helping employees change their health habits and ultimately, we're avoiding those long-term, very expensive hospitalizations and critical care.
I think that's important. That's good to hear. Thank you.
I think you said this, but when is the Hibbert location going to be?
They didn't, they avoided that.
Yeah, avoided it. Only 2025.
Yeah. So the, and the nice thing about that building too is it will host, host, house, what the word is, the police records unit when we're, while we're doing those renovations too. So temporarily, that'll be the location for police records. But we have a year left or so on the lease at Southern and Gilbert.
Through September of next year, the lease on.
But we'll, it'll get done here, the first quarter, I think. It's, it's looking good. We, it was an old building, it was an old county building, and kind of after we pull things apart, as you do, you kind of find some things that are, need to, you didn't see before when you're looking at it. So, but we'll, we'll be, we'll give you an update here pretty soon. We can get engineering to give us an update.
All right, thank you. Council, any additional questions on this? Thank you very much, ladies.
You're welcome.
Next item on our agenda, item 1B, is a presentation on the Utility Fund Forecast and Recommended Rate and Fee Adjustments. Gentlemen, it's that time of year again.
Brian Richel, Director of the Office of Management and Budget. Alongside me, on my left, your right, is Chris Alvey, who's a Deputy Director in the Office of Management and Budget. And then on the other side of me is Jonathan Perkins. He is a budget coordinator within the budget. So as you see, it is that time of year again, Mayor. The 2425 Utility Fund Forecast and Rate Recommendations. So we do have a long presentation, as you may have seen, with multiple departments.
You don't start off that way.
Multiple departments.
This is an invigorating.
It is invigorating. It is.
Now, Mayor and Council, here's, here's what we've done though, just with that introduction. We've scheduled a discussion on the utility rates for the next two Thursdays. So if you want to go for like an hour today and maybe get through water or maybe solid waste, then we could, we could stop and then come back next week and finish off energy. But if you're raring to go, we can save you time next week. So it's, you know, my point is we've scheduled it so that it's in two, the next two Thursdays. So we can kind of choose today how long you want to go and then.
And then again, just to remind us what we already know, when we do utility rate adjustments, there's a timing involved.
Yes.
Noticing that, that's, you know.
This is just the beginning, and then there's.
Yes, Mayor, Chris, we, yes, the timing is, I want to say critical, but there is a timing frame for this. So we would go to the presentation today and if need be, on Thursday. The Notice of Intent, which sets the 60-day notice for the rate adjustments, that is on September 23rd for council's consideration of the normal. So that would set the 60 days. So this presentation kind of sets that tone, and then we would present or for council's consideration on the 23rd. So today is the 12th, next Thursday would be the 19th, that following Monday would be the Notice of Intent. And just a reminder of the Notice of Intent, that sets the maximum adjustment for utility rates. So with that, there can be discussions, further discussions if need be for those 60 days. And it gives a 60-day notice for the public also to review the rates, rate adjustments.
And then Brian, we come back to council for formal action in November?
So yes, we would come back for, the introduction would be the last meeting in November, and the adoption would be considered in council on December 2nd.
So this became effect, will become effective proposal would be the first year?
Would be February 1st of next year, yes.
All right. Great, well, let's, let's see how far we get today. Are there any time constraints, Council, that, any meetings that we need to get to in the next, later this morning? Dan, okay. Great. Take it away.
So the next slide just shows the, the major players of Office of Management and Budget, Water Resources, Energy Resources, then Solid Waste. We will be coming up individually, as we've done in the past, and each department will have their own section that they will be presenting on and the proposed rate recommendations that they will have. Just a reminder, the utility operations, each utility is operated as a separate business. For instance, they will become, coming up separately and proposing their own rate adjustments for their own utility. The reserve balance provides a safety net for unseen conditions, as you'll, as you'll see in the forecast. But then also, the reserve balance can be used to smooth rate adjustments year to year. And this is critical because this is the philosophy the city has had for many years, is smoothing out those rate adjustments throughout the forecast. A few cities around don't do that, and so sometimes there is rate spikes. And as you see in some of the utilities around the valley, some of them haven't been doing raises for the past, or adjustments for the past couple of years, so now they're having to increase it significantly for their rates. So this is why we, the city has had that philosophy of trying to smooth it out so there isn't rate spikes and the customers can kind of plan and we can see how the forecast works in the outer years. So the five principles, I won't go over all these, but these are key to what we look at in the forecast. The significant ones is a balanced net sources and uses throughout the forecast, we look for that. Also, rate adjustments are predictable and smooth, as I mentioned. Another one is the 20% or higher reserve balance. That helps us when we go out for, for bonds and obligations to get a lower interest rate than what we would if we didn't. And then also, a big one is the equity between residential and non-residential rates. You'll, you'll hear some of the departments start talking about that, between residential and commercial rates. And then also, keeping it affordable for our customers. So now with the Utility Fund Forecast, Chris, we'll go over that.
Yeah, so this slide is the forecast as of the adopted budget back in May. So a few things to point out on, on where we started this process is looking at the total net sources and uses in the middle of the table, that's revenues minus expenses. So it is negative throughout the forecast period, however, it does improve. So 2324, we had projected negative 29 million, however, that does improve to negative 5 at the end of the forecast in 2829. The fund balance does blow up, drop, was projected to drop below the 20% level in 2425, which is this current fiscal year. And then due to the negative net sources and uses, there's a, there was a projected continual drawdown in the fund balance to where it ends up at 6% in 2829. I will note, the adjustments that occurred and were discussed during the budget process are in this forecast, so departments will highlight some of those larger increases, but water commodity costs, updated landfill contract costs, chemical costs at the treatment plants, those, those were in this forecast. What was not adjusted for this forecast were any rate adjustments. So the rate adjustments that were in this forecast were exactly the same as what was presented last fall. So during the budget process, we didn't touch rates. We do that during the fall.
I'm sorry, just to make sure I understand what you just said, so the, the projected net sources and uses do not have baked into them any rate increases?
They do, they do have rate increases, but they're the same as what we presented.
Yeah, so they're, that are a lower percentage than what, so this is the, this is last, last time we presented in the adopted budget, and it did assume future rate increases, but they were, they were less than what we're going to show you now. So the, the challenge we had even at the end of last year, the good news was the city was in a very strong financial position as far as its reserves and has been for some time with over 20% reserves, which is twice as much as we are, our standard is. But we also saw that what ahead, ahead of us were some, going to be some very large capital projects and with construction inflation, we knew that was going to hit us. So frankly, this proposal or this forecast that we had at the end of the last year was not in a good, we were not in a good position. And we recognized that we needed to figure out some ways to really manage those, or manage what the, the future was going to be for this, for the forecast. And so frankly, where we ended up, we were in a good position for the next couple, three years, but we saw that we were quickly drawing down the fund balance. So we knew that that was a challenge for us going into this year, that we had to look at, consider this net sources and uses and the fact it was continuing, well, it was becoming less and less, it was drawing down our reserves significantly and getting below what were our stated goals are on the reserve. So we set that as a challenge to say, okay, here's where we started from, it's not in the great, it's not in a good space, it's not the best position we want to be in. So we had to look at the future rates as well as adjustments in our projects, and, and that's where we're leading into the next slide, so.
Yeah, so this.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Alicia.
So can you tell us what, what was the rate adjustment that this forecast?
Do we have that later?
Yeah, we have.
We'll have the comparisons, yeah. We'll have those.
So this next slide is the Utility Fund Forecast with the recommended rate adjustments. So the box on the left is just a reference to those five principles that we have. So the net sources and uses does start negative, however, it does improve throughout the forecast period. In 2829, it's nearly break even, and then it's a positive of 18 million in the final year, fiscal 2930. Similar to the adopted budget forecast, we are projecting a drop below the 20% threshold in 2425. And then again, due to the negative net source and uses, continue to draw down the fund balance until that final year at 8.6%. And that, that increase from the 6.2 to the 8.6 is due to that positive net sources and uses. The 8.6 is within our financial policy of an 8 to 10% reserve balance at the end of the forecast period. The two years prior to that are below 7%, the 6.5 and the 6.2. So the big pressures on there that, that the departments will also discuss is rising project costs and the impact that that'll have on the utility fund. Some of the larger projects, like Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline and the Signal View Water Treatment Plan Expansion are projected to finish, come online around 2027. And so that's when those full project costs are going to be realized and start impacting the forecast.
We will have to manage those years 26, or sorry, 27, 28, and 28, 29, when we get in the next year, so we'll have to figure out a way to tweak those, these financials to get it closer to the, between the 8 and 10%. So, but we're not far from it, we just, we didn't want to put a lot more pressure on rates to make it happen. We're going to have to figure out other ways, operationally, deferring capital, managing project costs to get to those goals.
So clearly, the, the slide is provoking some questions. So is it, essentially what you're saying is that we are going to set aside the 20% fund balance goal going forward?
The goal is 8 to 10. We've enjoyed.
Why does it say 20% there then?
It's just.
So, so yeah, Mayor, the, the financial policy that is adopted by council is 8 to 10%, but our principles that we follow have raised that a little bit more to the 20%. So the adopted policy is 8 to 10, and that's what we've, we follow for the adopted, but for our principle, we'd like to keep that higher for credit rating agencies and bond issuances and things like that, because if they see a higher reserve, they may give us a higher credit rating and also lower our interest.
So that becomes an aspirational goal for us to get back to that at some point.
When we're with the rating agencies, we tell them our goal is 8 to 10%. But they can see that our historical perspective, we've been able to manage above 20% almost every year for the last, I don't know, decade?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're, we're seeing lots of pressure now, unlike we've ever seen before, on construction costs, and that's what's driving that number. So we've got to continue to be very diligent in trying to manage the cost. The challenge is with construction costs, it's kind of out of our hands, right? We kind of, we've got projects that have to get done. You know, delivering water through the central use pipeline is critical for us. Expanding the southeast, please for our treatment plant has to be done. And so we're trying to manage those as best we can. So we're going to have to continue to find other ways to tighten our belt, but it's very difficult with the rising cost of inflation.
Okay, I know we have some questions.
That was my question.
Okay. Yes, Alicia?
I guess, I assume that in year 2930, some of those projects you said have ended, and that's how we get back up into that positive.
Yeah, and just also, just, there's, we're. Yeah, and just also, just, there's, we're assuming a modest conservative growth in the base too, with more customers coming on.
Okay.
Yes.
Just one quick question, so I'll make sure I understand. So when we do new projects, new construction, we bond for those projects. If it's maintenance, we have that amortized in the rate? Like, we have to maintain, you know, pipes and everything like that on an ongoing basis, right? No?
So the, if it's a large capital project, that would go into a pledge obligation, but if it is like, operation, operations and maintenance of a plant?
Life cycle replacement.
Yeah, life cycle. If, if larger pieces of equipment at a, at a plant need to be replaced, we, we won't issue an obligation for that. That'll be cash funded.
Yeah, yeah. So that's figured in the rates.
All that, everything's built in here. We've tried to load up future pay increases, health benefit cost, maintenance cost, fuel increase cost, they're all built in here.
So with that, we will turn it over to Water Resources.
And I'll just say this, I mean, Mayor and Council, we have tried to be, you're going to see, we're going to try to be very careful about our assumption of what the rates are in the future, but obviously, you know, we, we will try to manage the cost in the projects. But if we get to that point where we're short of those goals, it will put more pressure on us to increase the rates to make up that, you know, to get to those goals. But right now, we're hoping that, you know, since we're so conservative in our estimates, where we assume all, everything gets expended and, you know, we're very conservative on revenues, that sometimes the being conservative that way will give us more capacity in the future. But ultimately, in a year from now, we're going to have, every year, we keep evaluating those years where we're below our goal and, and suggesting opportunities of how to get to that eight to 10%. Sorry, go ahead, Chris.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Chris. So we're going to get into a lot of detail with numbers and examples, and, and we're here to answer your questions, but I'm here with Seth Weld and Eric Hansen today. I'm going to turn it over to Eric in a minute, but I just want to put out there for you a few themes that aren't going to be overriding really the whole presentation. You've already heard about inflation. So it's, it's inflation across the board. It's really been inescapable. And we're going to talk probably more specifically to capital improvement, inflation and debt service, but we're not immune to that on the operations side. And for instance, the cost of our cap water is one of the biggest line items we have in our budget. In the last four and a half, five years, it's doubled. So, and we've had chemicals like bleach and ferris chloride that we use for odor control, those, those chemicals have doubled. So we're seeing a lot of that. So it's really inflation across the board we're going to talk to. And then with inflation, in terms of the rate presentation, it's all about a balance. So it's an exercise we've gone through over the last several months to really look at all our projects and evaluate which ones are absolutely critical, which ones could be downsized or pushed out. And that's all a balance to just ease the burden on the rate payers. So it's a constant push and pull. So there's things we need, but then there's, there's an impact on the rate payer. So how do we balance all that? So that's part of what you're going to see today. And then the, the last theme I'll mention really quick is conservation. So that's something that's been an integral thing for the last couple of years when we do these rate presentations. It's how do we get back to that equity for our different classifications of rate payers? We had a chart last year. It was a pie chart. It showed that 90% of our customer base is residential. But when you look at where the water is going, it's now, it's crossed 50% a couple of years back. So it's approaching 55% of the water consumed is actually by that 10% of our customers in terms of the classification. So those are some of the themes that are going to come out. So let's get into the numbers. I'll turn it over to Eric.
And you see that reflected in where you, the highest rate increases will go. It will go now to those higher tier, larger water consumers.
Great. Yeah, thank you, Chris and Chris. Good morning, good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. So within the Water Department, we're going to start with talking about the wastewater program. Specifically, we're going to talk about operational costs of the wastewater utility. This would be like your personnel costs, your chemical costs, electric costs. So there's actually two lines on this chart, a blue and an orange one. The orange one shows what we brought to you last year. So the orange line is last year's forecast, both in actual and forecast annual costs. The blue line shows our current forecast. This chart shows that last year's forecast was quite accurate, with no substantial changes to, to last year's forecast. So as we move on to projects now, on this slide and the subsequent three slides, we're going to talk about project costs and the associated debt. Listed on this slide are some of the major projects we have planned over the next five years, broken down into four categories. So we have them broken down into regional commitments. So on the wastewater side, this would be like our commitment to the 91st Avenue Wastewater Treatment Plant. We have broken down into life cycle replacement. Another one, big one here would be replacement of our wastewater collection system lines, like pipeline replacement and lift station maintenance. And then we have growth related projects. So this means larger diameter sewer lines and expansion of our wastewater treatment facilities. And then finally, there are a few projects the department are going to undertake in conjunction with transportation while the roadway is being constructed. We can take that opportunity to replace water and sewer lines. And there's about, between the two programs, water and wastewater, there's about $12 million in work forecast that would be bonded between those two, water and wastewater programs. And then I'm going to, I'm going to follow up with a chart showing the program budget and associated debt service. But real quick, Chris is going to talk a little bit more about these projects and some of the challenges that they currently face.
Right. So Eric's going to show you a projection of numbers on these four classifications that he broke down for you. These pictures illustrate three of the four classifications. We're not showing you the joint with transportation because that's really a small piece of it. And I won't talk to all these categories, but one comment I'll make on regional commitments. So a lot of the capital expenditures we have, it's not even work we're doing here with, with our own, I guess, within Mesa in our, at our infrastructure. It's checks we write to Phoenix for our joint ownership in the 91st Avenue Wastewater Treatment Plant on wastewater. And then when we go over to water and talk about that, the Bell Vista Water Treatment Plant. So it wasn't that long ago, maybe less than several years ago, that our total burden would be about $15 million in those regional commitments. Now, over the next five years, we're going to average 30, $32 million every year, between water and wastewater, just writing checks to Phoenix. And it's not that we're doing more or there's more projects underway. We're not doing more at all. We're doing the same, if that. It's just that things cost so much more. It's just hitting us across the board. But Eric will get into some numbers and illustrate that a little further.
Great. Thank you, Chris. So this chart goes back to those grouping of projects that we just talked about. So in the bars, you got that dark blue bar, those are our regional commitments, life cycle replacement projects in orange, growth in green, and those joint with transportation projects in light blue. We also include last year's forecast project budget, that's that orange dashed line. And then we also include this year's forecast project budget, and that's that blue dashed line. So the prior forecast used a base amount of $15 million per year determined pre-inflation. And then the current forecast used a base amount of $33 million for fiscal year 2425 and includes inflation. So this is all wastewater. So as shown, the prior forecast would not have covered our regional commitments, those commitments that Chris just talked about by fiscal year 2728. So our current forecast includes monies for both our regional commitments and our life cycle replacement projects. Now, at the end of this presentation, and to keep rate increases as low as possible and to protect our existing customers to having to finance growth related projects, we're going to introduce a new fee we'd like to then bring back to you for your approval that would pay for new growth. So now that we've talked about project costs, we can talk about the associated debt and debt service. So this chart is kind of like the one we talked about with the operational costs, except, you know, here, the current forecast and the prior forecast are deviating significantly. So that orange line shows what we brought to you last year, last year's forecast, both actual and forecast annual debt service. The blue line shows our current forecast. So in this chart, we can see the effect of our increasing project costs with our growing debt service. Though largely the same as our prior forecast in fiscal year 2425, our current forecast shows our debt service growing and diverging from our previous forecast due to increasing project costs. And so topping $51 million in fiscal year 2829.
We haven't added any more projects.
Not adding more projects.
These are just the same projects now with new estimates from the engineers. Is that fair?
Yes, sir.
20% more?
20%.
And I would add that we're not only, we're not doing more projects, we're actually doing less projects, or we're, we're downsizing scope and we're pushing projects out.
Turned this on this time. I mean, 20% more, fewer projects. What has been the CPI over the last year or two? It's not 20%. No?
Oh, line for construction?
What is the construction?
It's been more than that.
Is it?
Oh, yeah. Construction inflation is off the charts. Yeah. And you're lucky if you could even get it sometimes.
We actually hit almost 58% at one point.
We've seen doubling in these areas.
Yeah, the, the big contributor, one of them, is this environment where there's so much construction going on. It's starting to taper a little bit, that there was so much over the last two to three years.
In this area, you mean?
The valley, right? The valley. And with a lot of federal money also coming in for certain sectors, the semiconductor industry would be one. And we're all chasing the same limited resources. We're all chasing the same concrete, rebar, electric gear, even labor. So you have that much more money, that much more chasing this limited resources, the price of those resources have skyrocketed. So it's almost like CPI is over here, the national CPI is over here, but what we have to pay to compete for these resources.
So CPI in this particular sector is higher than what we'd be.
Construction, yeah.
Than other construction might be. So houses, even though houses have gone up, the fact that basically buying pipes because of all the water intensive uses that have been entering the valley has skyrocketed.
The pipes, I would say the pipes would be at the lower end. It's concrete and steel. It's where we're competing with transportation projects and, and large semiconductor facilities, those kind of commodities, electrical gear. It's not only that it's gone up, we have to wait two to three years just to get the electrical gear. So there's, there's a host of challenges across the board.
Okay. And could I ask, I would wonder if you would step back just a second, give us a brief? Because when you say writing checks to Phoenix, that doesn't sound good. So when we write a check to Phoenix, what are we buying? How important is that plant to Mesa's water and wastewater supply?
Sure. The council member somewhere. So we're partners. So writing the check is a good way to explain just where the money, the direction of the money, but we're, we're partners very much so. They operate, the reason that we pay them, we write checks for our share is because they're the, the managing entity, both at 91st Avenue and Bell Vista. But we have a seat at the table with them. We're part of the, every decision process in terms of what projects we do, to what level we do them. There's been times in the past where we don't agree with them and we basically argue for, well, our piece of the project, for our piece of the plant, we're going to do it in a different way that's more cost effective. So we have a voice.
So Chris, we, this is a regional wastewater treatment facility. So it's, how many cities is it by?
Yeah, for, for 91st Avenue, there's five cities.
Five cities that send their, and how mu, at what percentage of our wastewater do we send to 91st Avenue?
It's around half.
So about 50%. So instead of us having to build another wastewater treatment, and although we're pretty good about building those in other communities, but instead of owning it and operating it by ourselves, we join with a regional group of other cities. It's located in Phoenix, and it's a massive, what do you want to call it, complex of?
It's the biggest treatment plant in the state for wastewater. And because of that, there's, there's economies of scale. So that's why we're partners, because it is, it's very cost effective.
Multiple entities running a single plant that's, and, and I assume that this is a critical value to wastewater treatment for the city.
50% of our, 50% of our.
If we didn't have this, this 50%.
We would have to build, well, I don't even know how we'd have land they would do it.
It's about 15 MGD. The Northwest Plant, that's where the cup, by where the cups play, it's 12. So we're sending a little bit more than that.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to touch on that because it's, again, that term, writing a check to Phoenix doesn't sound right. This is a critical piece of infrastructure for our wastewater.
Right. So hopefully that puts it in the context.
Yeah.
Is the 91st, the one in Phoenix, the 91st Wastewater Project, is that the one where they're building out to do recycled water?
Right. Councilmember Dove, so we're actually, this fall, we're going to bring to you the feasibility cost share. So there's six, I believe, six entities right now that are at the table, and we're about to embark on a feasibility study for advanced purification at that facility.
So that would be a separate project, not part of the cost here?
Right. That's a standalone effort that needs to be studied and examined.
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to get too far afoot here, but how much of that is available? Because I thought the water from that went to the cooling towers at Palo Verde.
You're, you're exactly right. So large, the biggest portion of the effluent from 91st Avenue goes to Palo Verde Nuclear Power Plant for cooling. Some goes to an irrigation district, but there's about 50 million, if you just average it out over the year, it's about 50 million gallons a day that just goes down river that can be recaptured and repurposed.
So there's, there's still available?
It's significant.
Significant amount of money. Significant amount of water that we, we still have the potential to recapture from that plant. Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Chris and Eric, as, when you break down the growth, you know, the immediate thinking is the growth in the southeast, a, a, a part of our city, but i- is also growth in the west side as far as, as we're seeing more development here. So how do you, you looking at growth, what's that cost comparison from, just when you look at across the city? I- is it mostly driven by the south, southeast side? Or i- is there also a lot of cost pressures that is happening over here in downtown and the west side?
The way, council member Horede, the way it breaks down is most of our rehab projects are in this part of town, and then most of our new growth, our new pipelines, expanding treatment plants, that's on the east and southeast part of the city.
So we're, but we're still spending, you know, the rehab is very expensive, right? Going through those quarter sections or major pipes, we've had a look at. And in some places in the, on the west side, where we're having infill development, where we're having, maybe there's often times where we have to do, go back in and oversize the pipes, right? Because the densities may be different than they were. So yeah, it, while some people see all this growth and think all the money's going that direction, but we're also back here doing rehabs and oversizing to accommodate the west side.
Perfect.
Okay. So moving on to the impact to our typical customer, typical wastewater customer, and to service our increasing debt and maintain financial stability within the program, the department's proposing the following adjustments. This chart's a little busy, so I'll try to walk you through it here. On the far left side, we have our residential and commercial customers. And then what our typical customers currently pay in 2024, our typical residential and commercial customers, what they pay a month. And then on the next column, we have what we had forecast would be our rate adjustments last year for this year. And then kind of highlighted with that black bar there is what we are proposing now. So this year, we're proposing a seven and a half percent increase to both the service and usage components of our residential rates and an eight and a half percent increase to both the service and usage components of our commercial rates. So this equates to about a $1.96 increase to our typical residential customers' monthly wastewater bill and about a $4.45 increase to our typical commercial customers' monthly wastewater bill. All right. So now we can move on to the water program. Again, we'll start with the operational costs of the water utility. This chart's a little bit similar to one we looked at when we talked to the annual operational costs of the wastewater utility, this time again for water. The orange line shows what we brought to you last year, the blue line showing our current forecast. In this chart, we can see an increase to the operational cost of our water utility over what we brought to you last year to the over what we brought to you last year, to the tune of about $2.8 million. This is due in large part to the increasing, you know, raw water costs and chemicals. We see this at our water treatment plants, the water commodity with the forecast increase of about $1.1 million. And then at the Val Vista Water Treatment Plant, that plant we share with Phoenix, with an increase of about $1.2 million in their operating baseline.
So before we move on, I was going to talk a little bit, because on water, we have some different unique challenges than we don't have on wastewater. So one thing I want to point out with water is that we have, we had to make some harder choices because we have three really large projects. And then not only are they large projects, they've been subject to inflation, but just the way the schedules have shifted, they've really aligned themselves. So then a lot of the peak costs for all three of these projects are going to hit at once. So over the last several months, we've had to look with respect to being sensitive to the ratepayers, what other hard choices we, can we make? So a lot of our lifecycle programs and other projects, we've had to look at either downsizing significantly. So for instance, our transmission main inspection program, we've talked a lot about that as we've come up here in different presentations, how we close down sections of transmission main. We get in there with equipment, we look at any defects, we fix the defects, we do that every winter when demands go down. We're probably going to downsize that program by seventy-five to ninety percent over the next five years, just because we have to push out those costs. Another example would be our quarter section replacements that we had just talked about. We like to do one, if not two, a year. We're probably going to have to space those out and push those out. So we've done that as an exercise, just to push costs and defer those out, because we do have these other projects. So it's really making decisions. So wells, let me talk about wells for a second. I hired on at the city several years ago, and at that time, if you want to drill a new well, it was about a million dollars to drill the hole. And then it would be about a million and a half to pay a contractor to equip it, right? To put the pump in the motor and make it so that, you know, you could pump water out of that well. So about two and a half, maybe three million, this is just several years ago. Now it's $2 million just to drill the well. And we specifically hired a lot of JOC contractors with that new JOC limit of $4 million, so that we could hire them, and then well by well, they could equip it. Well, we can't find any of our JOC contractors who can even guarantee that they'll equip it for under the $4 million limit. So it's almost a decision paralysis, where we have to figure out another way to do it, which may be bundling wells as one package and then going out to bid and trying it that way. So several years ago, if you wanted a new well, it was two and a half to three million. Now it's at least six, and maybe six and a half. That's more than doubled in just a handful of years. So we had a pretty ambitious well program. We've drilled about half a dozen wells here in the last year and a half. So we've done really well. We've got to a point where we feel, based on the master plan that we just finished, we're in a good spot. So we're going to equip those wells, but now we're not going to drill any more wells for probably the remainder of the five-year program, because we want to defer those costs. So that's part of the decision-making process, which brings us back to the big three projects. I want to re-center ourselves on why those are so vital. So let's go to the first one. So I won't rehash this because we talk about this project frequently. So you know it's under construction. The good news is all the contracts have been signed, so there's no more surprises there. We know what it costs. We know that when this project is complete, it's going to, the water we're going to pump through that is going to be directed to the Gila River Indian Community, and then we're going to get vital cap supplies. What we haven't talked about much in the past is that several years ago, when we planned this project, we really didn't have a good full understanding, nobody did, that in 2027, the guidelines on the Colorado River are going to change. And all indications point to Arizona will probably come out the worst out of all seven basin states. So all water providers in Arizona are going to take some pretty substantial cuts. But by good planning and good fortune, we're going to be finishing this project at about the same time we will be experiencing cuts. We're more than going to wipe out those cuts. We're going to be neutral, or probably better than neutral, because we're going to boost our portfolio with the exchange at a time when we're seeing cuts. So we're in a very enviable position amongst other water providers in Arizona. And we have good momentum on this project, and it's one we have to see through. Eric's going to talk about some of the specific cost impacts in a second, but let me talk about the last two really quick. So the second of the three big projects is our Signal Butte Expansion. This plant is designed at 24 MGD currently, and it should be in the peak of summer, operating at that max 24 MGD, maybe four or six weeks out of the whole year. We're running, we're pegged at the full 24 MGD six months a year. So half the year, this is running at full capacity. And then we're using wells, we're pushing some water down from Brown Road just to make sure we meet demand. So to meet our build-out demand that we've master-planned, it's vital that we follow through with the expansion. And you probably remember before the break, you approved that contract. So the Signal Butte Expansion is fully under contract. The second reservoir is pretty substantially along, it'll be complete before long. And then they're mobilizing, and we're going through the shop drawing review to finish the expansion. We're going to take that plant from 24 to 48. That'll be the final expansion. That's critical. And the final one that is also aligning with these two is our AMI program. So the AMI program, we're making very good progress on that. It's also critical. Fortunately, that didn't experience quite the magnitude of cost increase as these first two. We have about 26,000 meters installed at this point. We're reducing our operating budget. We had 26 meter meters a year ago, now we're down to 20. And about every six to eight weeks, we're going to be cutting a position, and we're finding other jobs for the meter meters, we're reducing truck rolls. And I think the most encouraging thing to me is the, how we're helping customers find leaks that would take two months traditionally. I was talking with one of our field utility specialists last week, and he said in one day, he had eight work orders for continuous usage, where he had to go to customers' properties. One of them was a landscape meter that was leaking five gallons a minute, and the property owner had no idea, because it was a big, a big property. So five gallons a minute doesn't sound like a lot, but that's 200,000 gallons in a month that they would be billed for. And they, and in the past, they have been billed for it, but now we're finding that leak, we're finding those leaks almost real-time. And we had eight in one day, and over the course of a few of those guys, we had thirty. So this is a tremendous project. It's going to save us operationally. We're renewing the entire population of meters. And probably another encouraging thing is we're going to be able to have a portal for the customers here in the future, where they don't even have to rely on us, they can look on their cellphone and they can see how their water's being used. So it's really a beneficial project. I'm excited about it, and that should be done in about two years.
Chris, on that portal, when, when is that expected? I know we've asked in the past, what's, I know we've gone through various different software programs, and so when, because I, I think for the customer, being able to have that portal accessible sooner than later will be, will mean the difference here as we apply these, these readers.
Yeah, I, the answer is, unfortunately, we're still trying to find an acceptable vendor to provide that software. I think we were going down one path, and that didn't produce the results the customer service wanted. But we're optimistic, we're in a process, going through an RFP process to have that in place. Like, what did we say? We were trying to get next year, I think sometime, yeah, so it's sometime 25. So we'll, we, we just don't want to roll out something that is not customer-friendly. But, and that is our goal, and we want to get there. It's just, this is kind of new technology, so there's not like a lot of choices out there. So we're trying to be careful in who we choose, that it's not somebody just showed recently. But in the meantime, the staff is doing a really good job of identifying these leaks and contacting owners and letting them know about these leaks, and going to them and saying, hey, our reading shows you've got continuous use, we ought to, we need to go look at your meter. And so we've been able to help that. I mean, you gave a few examples, but it's been quite, there's been a lot of that going on.
I have a question. So are there any, are there times where there, I don't know what to say other than like a false positive, excuse me, for a, for a leak? I have had a constituent say, no, they were notified, you're 103,000 gallons above your normal monthly, and nobody can find a leak. So are there some kinks to be worked out? I, I mean.
Councilmember Goforth, I know, I know the cus, I wanted to bring up that example. So we have a customer, he's in his mid-seventies, he's a seasonal visitor, so he, he has a property, a manufactured home here, he lives in the Midwest. And he got his bill, and it was almost $900, and it was 103,000 gallons of usage. His normal usage is two to 6,000 gallons a month. This was 103,000. So we went out, we checked the meter, and the field check on the meter showed that it wasn't moving, it wasn't continuous, it appeared to be okay. And so we said, all right, the next step is you need to hire a plumber, maybe you have some issue in the house or in the property. He hired a plumber. He hired, I think, a second professional, look at something, maybe a landscaper. He had a friend, he calls a caretaker who looks at his house when he's gone in the summer. He looked, he couldn't find anything that was, that was of notice. We went back to look again, a second time at the meter, didn't find anything again. So finally, working with business services, we said, we've got to figure something out here. So let's pull the meter, because he's not home, he doesn't need the water right there. Let's pull the meter, take it to our test bench at our shop, let's test it there. It tested within spec. So when you get a mystery like this, our guys who have been here 20 years, they said what probably happened is that his caretaker, someone who's watering his plants, left the hose on. And it was left there, and then someone noticed it two days later. Because in three days of a hose being on, you could use 103,000 gallons.
Really?
Yeah, surprising, but you can. So you just think, that story I just conveyed to you, think about all the effort, the money our customer spent, the aggravation our customer felt, all the staff time that was spent with AMI. So what we did is I said, don't put back that meter, put an AMI meter in for him. So that we have now with the software, we can see how his water's being used. If someone's stealing his water, or if someone leaves a hose on again, we'll know, we'll get an alert, and we'll see that. And then when we do have the portal, he can sit in the Midwest and he can look in his phone, and he can have that peace of mind. But that's just an example of how much money, time, and aggravation this system is going to provide, is going to prevent.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for all that.
Sure. So now, let's talk about, so these are the big three.
Chris.
Mr. Freeman had a question.
I, I have to ask you a question, Chris. I want to circle back to the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline. I, I want everybody to realize the benefit in that and the cost savings, even though cap water's increasing. We know, as you said, the, the raw water costs are increasing all the time. But at the end of the day, this will pay for itself. I think we measured over a certain short period of time, about seven or eight years.
It's gone up a little bit. It's gone up a little bit because of the increase in the CAP rates.
Is that seven, eight still pretty good?
It's, it's probably around 11.
Okay. But still, that's a great return. We'll do those bills.
Well, yeah, but overall, the construction costs, I mean, when we first talked about this pipeline about four years ago, the, the net cost to build it was, oh, yeah.
It was like a hundred million, Councilmember Freeman.
A little over a hundred.
It's like the story you keep hearing over, and you're getting sick of it, I'm sure it's doubled.
Yeah, no, we get, excuse me, we get that. But that's, that's the importance of having our contract with the Gila River Indian Community to trade that affluent water for raw water, with the rising cost of cap water, that we can offset that cost and recapture that and have, you know, good water that can be treated for potable use. The other thing on the well sites, I, I think it's, in my opinion, not prudent to push off well sites. I believe in the infrastructure that we need today for the future or tomorrow. I, I just think that, you know, if we're expected to grow as a city, that we need our well sites. And I, I would just challenge you to look at ways that, if it's a six and a half million dollar cost for a well site today, what's it going to be like in two years?
Yeah. It's just the, it's just the question of the sensitivity to how much are we willing to increase rates to cover that cost?
I, I get, I get that.
And right now, we're just kind of like, these are, these are more, higher than what we wanted to do, based on where we were last year, but it's still a lot less than what you're seeing in other communities. So I think if we have time to continue to evaluate this over a period of time, you're seeing that big drop in the, in the two to three years out, because we're just hitting this peak of capital costs. If we can get through that period, then actually, we kind of level back up, because Mesa's just in this space right now, and thanks to Chris and his staff, their leadership, we are making tremendous investments in our infrastructure, but they're going to last us for lifetimes of people, right? Thirty, forty years. And so we're just kind of in this moment where we need to build these generational projects that everybody's going to start paying now, but over a period of time, once we kind of get past these next five to six years, it's going to be a huge benefit for the residents of Mesa, because we're, you know, we still have big projects to do, but these are big, large projects that we need to do right now.
I get that. I'm just challenging you to look at ways to put in our, in our well sites.
It's just a matter of coming back and saying, well, to do that, the rates would have to go up another whatever percent.
If I may bounce off you, I had the same concern for a different reason. I mean, we, we have access to an aquifer, that aquifer has a certain amount of water in it. Are we able to pump that water out if we need it? Because that's particularly of interest to Southeast Mesa, is the availability, not only the fact that we have the water underground, but can we access that water and pump it at a, at a rate that we would need, particularly as the, as the Colorado River water goes down? So we need the wells to do that, do we have the flow capacity and the well access to get into that water?
So Councilmember Summers, so yes, if you take anything away from today, just be assured that every decision, decision we make is backed by our hydraulic modeling and our master planning. And so we drilled seven wells.
You're right.
So this past summer, even though the Signal Butte Plant was running at full capacity, there was very little well backup we needed to engage to make sure that we met demand every day. So we drilled seven new wells. We, we don't even need seven at this time, so that gives us some runway ahead of us. So we can pause the well drilling, equip those seven, and then if anything changes with the modeling, you know, we can revisit that, we look at it constantly. But we feel very confident we're in good shape with the seven we drilled.
Yeah. That, that's comforting, but to Councilmember Freeman's point, the costs aren't going to go down anytime soon. So whatever revenue we can find, if it's, I know we want to hold down the rates, and that's important, but it, we've seen a few water grants come through from the federal government. If we have those opportunities, we need to continue to pursue those so that we can try to keep up on this and reduce costs. And I'm also a little concerned about deferred maintenance. It's, you, you put that off on your car, you just hear that little rattle going on your car, and at some point, that rattle turns into, instead of just a screw, it turns into a major repair. And so the cost goes up, and that's going to put pressure on, on future rate increases too. So I'm a little concerned that as we kick this can down the road, because of the inflation we have now, we might end up with bigger problems down the road.
Right. Well, point well taken. It's all, it's all a trade-off. It's this push and pull that I described earlier of, do we bring forward this, or keep it, keep the scope at the same, but is it going to have, what upward impact does it have on the rates? So it's just a constant balance. And that's why we're, today, we're bringing to you recommendations and having this conversation.
Right now, because you feel comfortable, I mean, it's not ideal, but you're comfortable with kind of where, what we're suggesting right now.
Well, I'd always, we'd always like to, we're engineers, we like to be conservative, right?
Yeah.
Of course. So, but I'm very, very comfortable in what we've modeled, all our projections, what we have in the five-year program. We'd like to have more always, because we are, we do want to be always conservative. The one wild card out there is growth. Eric showed you that earlier graph, where our spending line doesn't allow for a lot of growth. So as growth, as growth is needed, either because it's tied to a development agreement or just for whatever reason is driving that growth, then we have to make other decisions. So is that growth going to displace another project? So it's just, it's just squeezing down the margins, but those are just the decisions we have to make in this environment.
Well, and on that note, I see the, the increased cost in debt service, you know, the gap there that we're trying to cover as well. So on top of the capital growth, the debt service and all the components there, I know it, it squeezes what we can do, and we don't want to raise our rate increases too high for our customers.
And that's why we do this every year, right? We can have conversations every year.
That's why, we, we see this every year, so we can make adjustments. I think this is one of the highest rate increases that we're, we're looking at for in my tenure here for quite a while.
I agree.
And Councilmember Freeman, thanks for bringing up that point of concern for the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline. That is going to pay for itself over time. And the AMI, the smart meter program, that will pay for itself. So two of these three big projects that do have big price tags will pay for themselves over. So that is something we have to keep in mind.
Well, when you talk about two hundred and fifty thousand gallons of possible water being wasted on a meter, that's almost one acre foot of water. One acre foot is three hundred and forty thousand, I'll say. But, you know, that's gallons saved in acre foot. And you figure what's cap water cost for an acre foot of water?
Well, to require a new source could be thirteen thousand dollars.
Okay, thanks. Compare that to SRP, what's an acre foot of water for SRP?
Under a hundred dollars.
Okay.
I guess, back to the, we don't want to defer maintenance, I guess I was really seeing those two projects that you talked about, that were different, really as preventative, as opposed to we're just not maintaining the system. So, which doesn't give me quite as pot, I mean, of course you want to be preventative, and you want to go in there and be proactive, but it's not that we're deferring maintenance.
We're just not doing this much of the, like, typically, we would go into parts of the city, the older parts, and we would have a program where we would go in and start, we've already identified pipes, their age, their performance, and we kind of have a schedule to replace those. And ideally, right, we're replacing it before it becomes a big problem.
Yes.
So what we are saying, we are moving some of that further back. So the risk is, instead of us getting there right before we have breaks, we, if we, if we don't, you know, we make this decision, and then we start having a lot of breaks that we would have replaced ahead of time, that's when this model will work against us. So that's kind of, is Chris saying that about right?
I get the, I get your point to amend my analogy from the rattle, it's how often you want to change your oil. You can push that out fifteen thousand miles, but if you continue to push that down the road, that's a major engine repair at some point if we don't maintain it.
And to give you a little perspective, so the transmission main inspection program and rehab, that program, again, I'll go back to when I was hired several years ago, was maybe one to two million dollars. We've ramped that up over the years. We've gotten more aggressive with it, because the transmission mains, if you get a failure there, it's more catastrophic, it's going to affect more people. We've ramped it up from one to two million to nine million or ten million. So now, we're going to be taking it down to levels that we had not too far in the past. So it's not like we're not doing any, every single year, we're going to be doing transmission and main inspection. It's just we took it up to a level, now we're going to taper it back down a little bit.
What's the longevity on the wells? How long can they run?
Well, most of our wells are over fifty years old, and usually, your failure is down in the casing, you get some kind of deterioration. You get a hole in the casing, and then the whole well infrastructure starts to degrade.
I don't know, sometimes I think about how we can do better for infill and within certain areas to, instead of going out so much, you know, really think about how, capitalize what we can do within where we already have infrastructure, instead of going out.
Yeah, Councilmember Duff, that is part of our capital improvement program, is redrilling and reequipping wells that are, there's probably about half a dozen here in this part of town that are going through that program right now. We've already redrilled them, and now we're just reequipping them.
So Chris just got done talking about what we call the big three. And our current forecast includes an additional one hundred and twenty-five million dollars for the big three, based on the latest cost estimates and contract costs. So you want to break that down between the three projects, it's an additional fifty-five million for the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline, fifty-five million for the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant expansion, and fifteen million for AMI. And again, this, these increases are due in large part to inflation, so the cost of materials and labor. So in addition to the big three, listed on this slide are some of the major water projects that we have planned over the next five years. Again, the first category being regional commitments, so big one here being our contractual commitments to Val Vista. We got life cycle replacement projects. So a big one here is our maintenance of our water distribution system, so pipeline replacement, meter replacement, meter maintenance. Then we have growth-related projects, so new groundwater wells and water lines. And then, again, there are a few projects that we're going to team up with our transportation department to undertake while the roadway is being torn up. So similar to wastewater, this chart again breaks those groupings into those bars, the dark blue being regional commitments, the orange being life cycle replacement, growth is green, and you see a little of that light blue, those are those joint transportation projects. It should be noted that this chart does not include those big three projects that we just talked about. This chart also includes, like the previous one we looked at, last year's forecast project budget in the orange dash line, and then this year's forecast budget in the blue dash line. So the prior forecast used a base amount of fifteen million dollars per year determined pre-inflation, and the current forecast uses a base amount of twenty-seven million dollars for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and includes inflation. And similar to wastewater, as shown, the prior forecast would not have covered our regional commitments by fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. However, our current forecast includes monies for both our regional commitments and our life cycle replacement projects. And again, I want to emphasize, at the end of this project, we're going to introduce a new fee, which we'd like to bring back to you for your approval, that would then go to pay for that new growth, and protect those existing customers from having to finance that. So now that we've talked about the projects, we can move to the debt, the debt service. So again, this chart is similar to one we looked at and talked to with regards to wastewater and annual debt service, the orange line being what we brought to you last year, and the blue line being this year's forecast in both actual and forecast. Again, in this chart, we can see an increase, the effect of the increasing project costs with a growing debt service. So largely, the same as our prior forecast for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Our current forecast shows our debt service growing and diverging from our previous forecast, again, due to those increasing project costs, topping an annual one hundred and two million dollars in fiscal year twenty-nine, thirty.
Chris, for you, you've been pretty good at managing the debt service on these, moving out. If the Fed's talking about anywhere from a twenty-five to fifty basis point cut in rates, if that impacts municipal bonds, how could rate cuts smooth this out?
What are we assuming on these rates? Five percent for these numbers? Do you know on the estimated debt service, about five to six? Yeah.
So we always, that's kind of like our go-to rate. So yes, if rates come down, and we can go out into the market for less than that, then ultimately, it does have an effect.
So then we would be able to refinance these?
Well, this is, this is future, we haven't even issued this, right? This is just future forecasting of, we know what the construction costs are, the capital projects are. We said, okay, if we had to finance these today in today's capital market, or at a capital market of five percent, here's what the debt service looks like. So yes, all of this will be adjusted. Each year, we go out, and we'll have a better sense of what the rates look like. But for forecasting purposes, we kind of typically default to that five percent number. And then there are, and then when we actually issue the bonds, we'll make those adjustments to what the actual cost of financing is.
All right. And then back to the slide, we don't have to change it back because it's too far back, but when we talk about going below the twenty percent, we're going to hit our eight to ten percent council policy, but fall below the twenty percent, do we know how much that might increase the cost of bonds for us, or the interest rates?
We don't. We will oftentimes buy, insurance, Mike, what's it called? We'll pay for the insurance to get to the, bond insurance to get to the higher, and I don't know what that costs. We can share that. When we come back to sell the bonds, we can talk about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, to service our increasing debt and maintain financial stability within the water program, the department is proposing the following rate adjustments. Again, this is a little bit of a busy chart, so I'll try to walk through it slowly. In this chart, we see our customers and their typical customers' monthly consumption. So you see residential, our typical residential customer consumes about six K gallons a month in water. The next column over, that's what our typical customers currently pay in 2024. Then the next column over is what we had forecast would be our rate adjustments last year for this year. And then that final column with the black box around it, that's what we're proposing now. So this year, we're proposing an across-the-board increase of about five and a half percent to the service component of all of our water customers. And then to the usage component, a five and a half percent increase to the residential customers, an eight percent increase to the commercial general customers, a ten percent increase to the commercial landscape customers, and an eighteen percent increase to our large commercial customers. So this would equate to about a two dollar and twenty cent increase to our typical residential customer's monthly water bill, about a four dollar and sixty-five cent increase to our typical commercial customer's monthly water bill, a thirteen dollar and eighty-seven cent increase to our typical landscape customer's monthly water bill, and a thirty-five hundred and ninety-seven dollar and nine cent increase to our typical large commercial customer's monthly water bill. So this includes like our customers like Apple and Niagara.
Increase, you can see a significant percentage increase in that commercial side. And I think Chris talked about how they're becoming at least fifty percent of the usage. And so we needed to get them closer to identifying that, truing up that usage with the cost. And so that's where you see these rates are getting more aggressive on the large commercial side than they are with any other customer category.
That's kind of scared off large commercial users, and we've never actually imposed that on anyone. But who is in this bottom category? Are there really just those, the two names that you mentioned, or is there anybody that, I didn't know we had anybody in that category? Mayor, so seven, seventy-five hundred K gallons, so that's seven and a half million gallons a month. So you're getting up there, pretty substantial water use, and you're going to be in single digits in terms of the number of customers who are up there. So we do have a handful of them? Yes. Okay. And we have them in a category that's.
Right, but we didn't have, that wasn't the rate that you were talking about last time, right? You didn't discuss the rate.
You're talking about the ordinance?
Yeah.
So the ordinance, really, it's completely independent of this. They're going to, however much water they use, that goes through that meter, they're paying this rate. The ordinance is really speaking to the fact that if they use more than a certain threshold in a year, a total monthly average, they have to go get that water.
Now, we're coming back with the ramp.
So when it comes to rates, though, we do have this super user category, and have they, prior to this, paid a different rate than other large commercial users? Are we creating this super category for the first time? This is, it's not a new category. We've had this category before. Okay. How long, how long have we had this?
Ten years. Yeah, we're just increasing, you're just seeing that that percentage is going up higher than the other categories.
It speaks to the conservation element, and trying to just strive for that more equity in the classifications.
We're recognizing they are a major user, right, of all water, so.
Mr. Freeman? Chris and Eric, on the service charge for residential use, explain to me the increase from, you know, the prior forecast of three percent to five and a half percent. Why would we want to increase on the service charge?
So the service component includes three K gallons of water, and it's a fixed rate, it's a fixed amount of monies coming into the department, and it provides a substantial amount of our revenues that we see.
It's just whatever, just even just having an account, and it's just the ability to get the water at any time to that account. So it's not your usage, it's just kind of the, everybody pays this service charge.
I get that because the difference between the service and the usage charge.
Yeah, but, and a lot of that goes to the plants, right? The building of these plants is directly related kind of to that base of the service, because it's, everybody benefits from the capital projects. It's the other things that we're trying to capture on the usage.
I was just thinking the differential, if we kept, this is just my talking, about kept at the service charge at three percent and not five and a half, what that cost differential would be to the customer, future discussion.
To make up for it on the usage charge?
Yeah. So, you know.
We could look at that. It could be significant, though. I think you'd be double digits. I mean, Eric, you're saying that the service charge is by far, that's where the majority of revenues are, right?
It's a reliable, dependable source of revenue. It's, but it's split, you know, between usage and service.
Could you just look at it?
Yeah, we could look at it. I think the key is that if it doesn't work, if people start reducing their usage, we're still going to have to increase the rates again, right? Because we're going to need that. That's why the base charge, the flat fee works, because it applies to everybody regardless of how much water they use.
Right. Thanks.
On that service charge, I see that you have, they increase the same across the different pieces? Like, why wouldn't we tier it from residential to commercial as far as an increase, right? Because I know we have residential as a bulk as far as accounts, but why would we charge the same per residential service charge to a large commercial?
I think it's just been the philosophy of thinking about that as the base rate, just to get water to your house, and then after that, what do you control? But that's just, I don't know.
Can we look at that piece as well?
You could spread that.
We could, because we've just kind of thought of that across the board as like, for everybody, it's the same. And then you, then we have the variable rate after that. But we could look, I mean, we could look at that. It's just been kind of our practice in the past.
For sure.
I'm sure that that has to be that way. It's just kind of how we, the philosophy's been.
Sure. Well, I'm just trying to look at reducing the charges to the residential customer, even though they're not the main user of the wa, I'm sorry, their use of water is less than the commercial side, or fifty, fifty-fifty, I think is what you're saying.
Yeah.
And keep our residential customers as low as we can. And, you know, if you're in the business to use water, well, maybe you have to pay a little bit more. I mean, that may be hard, not hard to swallow, but, and then they're going to pass that cost on to their customers and how they do business. So I, if you could just look at that, and spread that out on the service charge like Vice Mayor talked about.
Well, we'll look at the difference of what it might be for the overall rate increase, because it will, I think, yeah.
Yeah, we can just throw some different numbers.
And look at the next slide is really where you kind of see also this idea of distinguishing about usage.
While you're doing that on the service charge, there's a, did you say two thousand gallons comes with that?
Three thousand.
Three thousand gallons, okay. So you play, basically, you're paying a service charge fee, everybody pays the same, and that's your first three thousand gallons of water.
Well, one thing to add.
There's always one person that has to pull this sideways.
No, because the base charge is based on the size of the meter. So we can't say everybody is paying the same. Depending on the size of the meter, the larger meter is paying a higher base.
Would that include residential?
Commercial is paying.
Don't think of that as being the same.
I was thinking residential, just to stay in the same ball field. So does anybody, does anybody have a bigger, very few people, I would imagine, have a bigger meter for that.
Very few. We do have a few that are up on a one inch.
But that's a really small.
Small number.
Right, right.
Commercial then goes to a bigger meter set, so it's going to be a different rate.
Yeah, just to clarify my question, I was referring specifically to the residential discussion, and those rate payers. And so you're paying basically the same fee unless you have a different sized meter, you're going to pay the same fee, first three thousand gallons is included in that service charge.
And that includes, there's a lot of people who live by themselves, and that covers them. So they're just paying that rate. That's all they're paying.
Right, and winter visitors are going to use less.
When they're not, right.
When they're not here, but they're still landscaping.
When they're not here, they're just paying, that's what prompted us to do this, is because we didn't have a base rate, whatever, a decade ago. And so you would have people that would leave for months and not be paying anything. Yet, we had to build the capacity that, if that got turned on any time, to service that.
Well, and you still have to have water and fire hydrant out front, because sometimes lightning strikes.
No, that's the point. That's why we came up with that fee.
And that's part of that, having that fee. But, you know, we can even probably look at what that usage is. I don't know if it's worth looking at, how much we, is it three thousand, five, four thousand? And I know we've adjusted that amount, I think, in the past. So maybe that's something else to look at, if we want to do some adjustments, just to make it a little bit more, a little bit more comfortable for people. Because this one particularly is going to really impact, you know, pocketbooks.
We'll go back and, it's all interrelated, so we'll go back and.
Exactly.
To what a lot of you.
But I guess, are you suggesting, just want to be clear, are we looking at shifting it out of the residential and more to the commercial, or just shifting it within the residential, the difference between a service charge and. Or just shifting it within the residential, the difference between a service charge and a usage charge?
No, I don't, I think
Because I'm getting two different, yeah.
Well, no, I'm with Councilmember Freeman on this, so just
So what is that? What is that?
So I think looking at how we ship, well, what did you, what's your idea? Let's talk this through.
Well, I, just to change in the service charge, you know, the usage is whatever you use, you're going to pay for that.
So you're okay with, it's not that we're looking across, we're just looking within residential?
Yes, just residential.
Well, that's not an increase in commercial.
No, that's what I'm asking. It's just looking within residential. We know right now, Eric can calculate, he could tell us, that based on these rates, we estimate that so much revenue is going to come from residential with this split. And if we're saying, well, we want the same amount of revenue, but we just want it to come more from the usage than the service, then he can do that calculation. If the question is, no, we want to shift more to the commercial, then I need to have a better sense of, well, we're talking about 10% more, or are we talking, because that's, that's a very different question.
I think you're going to have to run the numbers on that.
Well, I know, but I need to understand, which direction are we going in? Are we trying to take the revenues that are being collected within residential and just shifting them between the service charge and the usage charge?
Since we don't have the service charge, has the service charge rate gone up since last year?
It goes up. What was, go ahead.
So we had proposed last year, at last year's forecast, for this year, we had forecast an increase of 3% to the service charge. Right now, we're proposing a 5.5% increase. If I, if I understand what you're saying correctly, maybe taking a look at keeping that service charge at 3%
I'm just using, yeah.
And increasing the usage charge to where we have it currently at 5.5%, maybe looking at 7% or 6% or some other number.
Or take some of those numbers and apply them maybe into the commercial part as well.
See, that's the difference, that's the difference. And so, and I was, we can do that. But as you can see, we have been very aggressive in pushing more of that cost to the, that's what we heard. I think if you do more of that, it will start becoming an issue. Commercial is going to start, we're going to be out of the competitive market with other entities then, at some point.
So these, these rate
Where else are they going to get their water?
I apologize, but, so these rate percentages we're seeing are increases, not the rate amount. So that 3% is saying it's an increase from today.
So
Yeah, because I think Frankie was suggesting that maybe we increase the service charge for commercial.
Well, I think
Like, that that shouldn't just be standard across the board.
Yeah, I think looking at the numbers as far as what that means, if you're, if you don't increase residential, or maybe 3.5 increase on service charge, and it's tiered to the more usage of large commercial, commercial landscape, commercial general, you like, how do you, how do you, how do you smooth that service charge where it's not all equal, right? Like, I know the lines are, are different and the base is different, but to just put equal service charge is not, I don't think it's, it's, you know, fair.
Yeah, and Vice Mayor, and in order to try to simplify this on this chart, please don't think that the word service charge means that they are the same in each one of these categories. They could be significant, and they will be significantly different. So a percentage of a service charge in a commercial landscape is much different than a service charge percentage for residential. So, but maybe next time we come back, we can show you the numbers and not just think about percentages. See service charge and see 5, 25%, think that's similar. It's not. It, it's a much different base that we're starting from.
Are you confused?
No, sir.
I think what Councilmember Freeman brought up is a good idea. I think what I would like to add to that is maybe we need to look at how much, how many gallons people get for that service charge before they go into the usage charge. So if it's 3,000 now, do we want to go to 4,000? I think we did adjust it not too long ago. I'm also very cautious listening to your presentation about moving too many things in other directions. I think the council did an excellent job in adopting a large commercial user ordinance for those who are, you know, trying to, trying to tighten a spigot on these large users and encourage them to use conservation and new techniques, new technologies that some of them are being built here in Mesa in order to reduce their use and how they cool their systems, that type of thing. If we start pushing charges up on other commercial users, the commercial general just is going to increase the price of their, their goods and services. If we push it into commercial landscaping, it just pushes it off to the HOAs, they're going to increase your HOA fees. So everything we do is, is just going to pull a string somewhere else. It's right, so.
And another way to think about the service charge, when we developed it, it really was intended to identify a steady, consistent fee that would help us cover the debt service on capital. And that the usage charge was really related to the cost of water, cost of commodities to cover that cost. So that's why you kind of see that split. It's just that there's some fixed cost. And I, the only hesitance I have, and we can get the numbers, and we could sort of tweak this, I'm not saying ask me exactly what representing it is, but that service charge is really kind of this base fixed number that we can rely upon when we think about our debt service, and we know that it's going to happen. So we're not as worried about whether it's going to be a really dry season or really wet season to make those adjustments, right? Because once you buy that capital, it's going to be with you regardless. Now, sometimes if we have a wetter season or a drier season, commodities can change a little bit, but debt service is kind of with you all the time.
Well, and what we also heard today is the CPI is, isn't just influenced by what happens at Mesa. You can build a huge water-using chip manufacturing plant over in Phoenix or Peoria, and it's going to drive up the costs here. So all those, you know, we're paying for that, that's happening somewhere else. If there's any good news, it's creating a lot of jobs. That's fantastic, so, but we're going to have to figure out how to do this. My concern is, in the commercial general and the residential, there are folks that are barely making it on the edge, small businesses, individuals, retirees, and, you know, every, the little tweaks that we can make in these to push things maybe over to the consumption side and lighten the load on the, and the, help me, service charge side, you know, the smaller increases are easier to manage. So it's really tweaking these on the edge really can make a huge difference in, in some business owners and people's lives. So it's, it's an exercise we're doing. Thanks.
I just want to just point out, what I meant is not to take away the service charge or even increase it, but how do we smooth out that service charge from our residential to the larger commercial as we do with our usage, just to look at those numbers of what that means, right? If it's increased 4% instead of 5.5 on the residential to maybe a 6%, 6% on the large commercial, you know, just what that looks like so that we can
Why don't we get you the actual numbers? I think you can see the actual numbers and not the percentage. You'll see that there's a distinction.
Okay.
Yes, I think what you pointed out, Vice Mayor, already was very clear, so I think we know how to analyze that and get those numbers for you.
Perfect, thank you.
Question, what are the tiers? Tier two, tier three, tier four? How many, what's the usage on that?
Usage on that current, I can get that for you real quick here. So the first tier is the 1 through 3K gals. The second tier is, or I'm sorry, the first tier is the, is 1 through 6K gals, the first 3K gals provided free with the service charge. The next tier goes up another 8K gals, so it's a 6 to 14K gals.
Which tier is that?
That's the second tier.
Tier two.
And then the threshold of the next tier is another 10K gals up, so that'd take it to 24K gals.
And, and your average user today, residential user, what's number do we use now?
6K gals, so 6,000 gallons.
So that's your average, most majority of your residents are paying in that tier two, I guess.
Tier one.
Tier one, sorry, tier one, sorry, tier one. And so everything after that, we associate, I mean, you have a larger house that uses more, maybe more people living there, but at some point after tier two for sure, maybe in tier two, it's outdoor usage. It's significant outdoor usage at this point. And that's why you see our proposal on those rates.
And if you're just into tier, say you're using 8,000 gallons a month, then, well, the first 6,000 are tier one, and it's just that next 2,000 would be at the higher rate in tier two. So it's, you're paying, you're paying appropriately per the tiers.
When I was at a conference a couple of weeks ago, there was some discussion about high water users, specifically around data centers, that they were seeing data centers who wanted to do electricity but couldn't get the availability from the service providers, they're kind of tapped out, and then looking, reverting for water or looking at other. Do you see of any of that discussion where they're shifting, you know, considerations on how to have their business when they can't get electricity?
Councilmember Duff, I can't speak too much to the electric side and the conversations they have. We're not really privy to that, but we do see people change their technology. There's been a couple notable ones here that we're going to use water for cooling, and they've switched to electricity. And I don't know if there's headwinds, if they want to switch to electricity, that it's not available here in Mesa. I haven't seen that to be common.
It's just a timing issue, usually on power.
I think there's one project, right? There is one project that's happened in Mesa.
I can't say they're starting to get pinched. Based on conversations I've had, is some of the large users, and it's not just data centers, but they're starting to get pinched and, I don't want to speak for SRP, because that's who the service area is, but like, they're
No, it's, no, this is a story that's been going on. It's timing. They can't get to them. They're years behind for some of these things. They'll be waiting, you know, Cannon Beach, which is a data center, just got their power this week, right? And they've been waiting for probably a couple of years. So it's across the board. We're having a problem with city, city projects, right? We just, we just can't get
And all of this is driving up costs, too.
Yeah.
Cannon Beach, again, like you said, not a data center. It's actually a wave park. Speaking of water.
Okay, so the, we can just say those are the water conservation
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I don't know if there's any questions on that. I'm trying to help the council. You can see, again, we're just trying to be more, a higher percentage on the higher users, which we really associate with outdoor water usage.
And then finally, a couple of rates we're proposing, would like to bring to your attention, includes our interdepartmental rate. So the rate which we charge the different city departments, we're proposing an increase of 10% to those that usage charge. And then lastly, the department provides fire suppression to now 12 customers in the North General Aviation Area Gateway, including such companies as Cessna and now Virgin Galactic. This rate change that we're proposing, the rate charged to customers for operation maintenance of the infrastructure has not been updated in 10 years. It's, operation and maintenance is recovered through a monthly charge, called the demand charge. The department's proposing a 30% increase to this charge to bring revenues in line with costs associated with operation and maintenance of this infrastructure.
Okay, with this, with this final slide, this is something Eric had touched on a couple of times, it's related to growth. So we have impact fees, we've had for many years, water and sewer impact fees, those are sunsetting. So there were legislative changes that were done about a decade ago, so there was a ramp down period. And I would say even as soon as the end of this year, we'll have no more impact fees. So there's no mechanism other than on the backs of our current rate payer base to pay for new growth, expansions, new pipelines to serve growth, master plan growth. So we went through a few exercises. We can come back later and talk more about numbers and give you some ideas of what those numbers will look like. But in a sense, it's, if you come, you're coming in as a new customer and you're putting in a meter, and you're going to run water through that meter, there could be a growth, some type of fee associated to pay, so it's growth paying for growth, and it's not everything riding on the backs of the rate payers. We've even looked at a scenario where because most of the future growth that remains ahead of us is commercial industrial, I think it's less than 10% is residential. Maybe it just applies to that area. But there's many ways we can look at it, but it's just a concept we wanted to bring forward with you today. There's no numbers associated with any, anything we've shown you today with the rates, it's just more of an idea.
Just letting you know, we're thinking about this, and we will be bringing it back. We're looking at some other cities that have done some things like this. The legislature has taken away a lot of our impact fee provisions, so we're trying to figure other ways to capture this cost.
Right.
But we'll come back. We just want to let you know, we're, we're thinking about how to get growth and pay for growth. All right, that's all we have for wastewater and water today. And if, and you don't mind, what I'd like to do is skip and just jump, pull her to solid waste, finish that off, get that done by 10, and then we can come back next Thursday, or right before 10.
Yeah.
Okay, doesn't want to say we'll finish.
I'm in my car.
Okay. Well, if we can do that, then we can come back Thursday and we'll finish up energy resources.
Great, let's go.
What number does the document start on?
49?
Yep.
Okay, good morning, Mayor, Council. I'm Sherri Collins, the solid waste director, and with me I have Justin Stat, our senior fiscal analyst, and we're here to present you our rate recommendations. And I'm going to actually turn it over to Justin to start us off.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. First, I'd like to talk about some of our cost pressures we're going to see during this rate cycle. The first one is our landfill charges. You can see we're going to anticipate about a $3 million increase there from about 9 to 12 million. Some good news is, we did able to extend some existing contracts, which helped mitigate some of those cost pressures we're seeing there. The other line item we're seeing increases to is our fleet maintenance costs. Right during the pandemic, we saw the lead time for our trucks slowing down a lot, and we'll have some more information on that later. But those longer lead times mean older trucks, meaning more maintenance costs. So we're anticipating this $3 million for next year, but hopefully that'll go down in subsequent years as well. This next slide is just a chart depicting these cost pressures I just spoke about on the previous slide, and how they kind of affect our new forecast, and that jump you see is solely related to our fleet and landfill costs. And then the last graph I'll show you is just a annual fleet maintenance cost compared to our average truck age. As you can see, the older our trucks get, the more they cost to maintain. Like I said, we've been working closely with fleet, budget, performance excellence, to make sure that we're ordering these trucks in a timely manner so that we can mitigate these issues in the future.
Justin, tell the council, Sherri, the councilor, Sherri.
Now what the lead time is on a truck typically?
Yes, the lead time on a truck typically is three years. We're seeing that come down just a little bit, but right now, they're still years out.
So trying to figure out what we need to replace and make that order now and hope we can get it here in three years, that's created an interesting calculus for us now.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Okay, so now I'm going to cover our rate recommendations. The first rate recommendation I'm going to cover is our solid waste residential rate. So that's our typical residential customer with a 90 gallon blue and black barrel. We're recommending a 5.5% rate recommendation, and our prior forecast was a 3%, but as you saw those cost pressures on the first slide, so just adjusting for those. So what that means is the average residential customer will see a rate increase of $1.73 per month. The next rate recommendation we have is for our green, our neighborhood cleanup program. These neighborhood dumpsters, roll-off boxes, they're covered under the green and clean fee. They're experiencing the same cost pressures that we talked about earlier, so we're just looking to increase that by 4 cents per month. So the average residential bill on the next slide in total will be $1.77, is the recommendation, and it's broken out on the slide. Now moving over to our next line of business, which is our commercial services. These recommendations, before I get started, I just want to remind you that these are open market, so we do compete with commercial businesses for these, for these services, or other commercial companies for these services. The overall rate recommendation for our commercial frontload trash service is 10%. We get there a multitude of ways. Some of the ways that we get there are highlighted on, in here, and the way that we're going to increase our rate. So the first is, we are recommending to increase our base rate, which is our standard rate for service by 6.5%. Our, most of our customers are six yards, so if you have a six yard bin going once a week, that's the rate increase you'll see from 11481 to 12222, which is approximately $7.41 per month. In addition to that, in the frontload service, we do have, we do zone our services to keep them very efficient, but sometimes people need more service than that. So to go out of zone on an efficiently route, an efficient route that. So to go out of zone on an efficiently route, an efficient route, it does cost more. So we're recommending to increase that by $3. And then we've been offering discounts and just over the last couple of years, trying to get rid of some of these discounts that truly aren't discounted services. So in line with that, just looking to decrease our multi-day discount. So if we have to service a customer multiple days, it truly isn't a discount to go back out on that second day. So currently it's a 10% discount. So we're going to reduce that to a 5% discount. We also have service agreements with these customers for one, two, or three years. A lot of them are on three-year service agreements. And in those service agreements, we do have in there that if our rates, their overall bill goes over 8%, that they can look for other services and get out of their service agreement. Moving forward, we're just looking to increase that to a 10%. Another line of commercial services that we're recommending to increase is 5% for our cardboard-only program. Again, this is mostly a six-yard bin program. So looking to increase that to cover cost of service from 97.38 to 102. It's about $4.87 a month. And we've been increasing this over the years to get it to what cost of service is. A lot of these programs many years ago were implemented at free or very low rates. So this is just a process to get us to where we need to be to cover cost of service. And then the next slide is going to cover a new program that we brought to during our budget cycle. We talked about an award, an ADQ grant that we got. We were awarded to implement this program. So we're very excited about it. This is to bring commingled into the downtown area. It's a very small program. We have to keep it cost-effective and efficient. So we really want to focus on the downtown area and the multifamily that's coming in the downtown area. It's something that they want down there. They are very excited about this and then looking at the commercial customers as well. So implementing this new rate so we can put this program in place, and it would be equal to what the other frontload recycle program is, the cardboard only at 102.25 per month. Another new rate that we're looking at implementing is a commercial blue barrel. So just to be clear, this is not, this is not residential. This is not what your single-family home would see. This is for the businesses that have blue barrels in the community. Again, this is another program that was implemented many years ago for free. It is not free and there's a cost of service. So along those same lines of those free and discounted services, just trying to cover cost of service. We have, we have talked to other municipalities that offer this commercial. A lot of them don't, and the private sectors don't offer this. So it is something unique we can offer to our commercial customers. And we're very proud of it. But we need to cover cost of service. And the other municipalities do the same. So we're, we're in line with what they're doing. The revenue on this is just an estimate. We currently don't have a rate for it. So we really don't know how many barrels are out there. So we will continue to look at this and, and update our forecast on this. But this is just our first guess. Once we get a rate established and get a handle on it, we'll know exactly how much revenue it's going to bring. But we think it's definitely a needed rate. And then our next line of commercial services is for roll-offs. So these are those large dumpsters, as you see in the picture, that oftentimes the residents might use for a big remodel project or something like that. Typically, they won't use them too often. We have commercial customers that also use them. But we have been increasing this over the last few years as well. And so this year, we're looking for another increase of 6.5% and to cover those same cost pressures we talked about on this first slide. And we're looking to increase the rate that we charge for the tonnage, which we covered on that first slide. So the trash tonnage, each ton would go up from 42.20 to 47.75 for trash, and then green waste respectively from 49.90 to 55.50. And then the charge that we, the fee that we charge to haul it, just increasing that by $2. On the next slide, it gives an overall summary of what this would mean. So for, if you were to get this at your home, it would mean an increase of 18.65 for that one time that you use it. And then if you were to use green waste, it would be 18.80. And that concludes our rate recommendations for this year. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Can you go back to the commercial blue barrel? You said this is not the same as residential. What is this?
So it is not the same as residential.
But it's recycling.
Correct. Yes. So we have businesses that will have a frontload bin, and they do want some recycling. And so again, we just received the grant to do a very small pilot in the downtown area for the frontload commingled. But instead of offering that, because a lot of businesses don't have enough for that, but they want to recycle, we will offer them a commercial blue barrel. But our residential routes are routed very tight and efficient. And so when we do have to go off route for these into a business, it could be an office complex, it could be, you know, a, a pet food store or something like that, or, you know, any commercial business. They, we will offer them a commercial blue barrel. And currently it's free, but it's not a free service.
It doesn't, it, it's not, it costs you.
It costs us, correct. There's a cost of service.
But you mentioned you don't know how many we have.
Do you know how many free ones you have out there now?
We have a good idea, but we don't have a rate to track it. So once we get the rate, that is the best way to track how many customers and size of customer. But because many years ago, when this was implemented, we put them out there without a rate, it's really hard to track them.
Because they have to, like you just said, they have to go off route to get to the barrel.
Do they call you for the pickup? Or is it on a route?
It is on a.
It's on.
Yes, yes. Mayor, Councilmember, go forth, Mr. Brady. It is currently on a route. We also came to you a few months ago with, that we're very paper-based. So we do put it on a route. We are also implementing tablets. So there are a lot of initiatives in the works that would help us with this. But currently, we have a very good idea for some of the tracking mechanisms we use to actually get it on the route. But we don't have an exact count without a rate. But we have a good idea.
Sherri, on the commercial increases, are you monitoring the, the, the costs from commercial vendors and where we fall? Are we lower or higher? Just because this is, I think this is a little different from our previous discussion where we talked about commercial there. This is more competitive, right? That the more customers we, we have, the better, I guess. But where are we at as far as pricing on, on our rates for these different items?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Heredia. We do look at what the private sector is charging. We are still competitive with them. And in addition to that, this year, we actually reached out to some of the other municipalities to look at where they were. And we are actually in line with them. And their rate structures that they're looking to propose for this year as well are looking at similar rate increases that we're proposing for their commercial side. We do remain competitive. Some of the other things that we do in Mesa that the private sectors don't is, we pick up every week. We are finding that the private sectors will just skip them. And so we do have customers calling for that. We do have a call center where you can speak to somebody local and live. And so that's really beneficial to the customers. So they'll come back because they will get frustrated with the private sector. In addition to that, we don't have any hidden fees, and we only increase our rates once per year. So what a lot of these private sectors will do is they'll have an asterisk that says, you know, environmental fee or fuel charge or something like that. So it might look good for the first three months. And then we're finding that they'll get a bill that significantly increases it because of one of those asterisk items. And we don't have anything like that. So we are competitive with the private sector.
Okay, perfect. I just, because over the, the last several years, I think we've, we've pushed up rates because we were way behind of the commercial sector, right? So are we nearing kind of the peak where that cost is more than commercial? And are we seeing, seeing any trends as far as losing customers or gaining more customers based on, I think what you've said, customer service-wise, it's a no-brainer to probably go with us. But I, I think the cost-wise for our business is, is very dependent on who do you, you know, bend out to, right? So usually that's something that is first top of mind for a small business. And, and so are we seeing that trend, losing customers or gaining more customers based on what you said?
Yes. We're, we're not seeing a trend in losing customers as we've done these rate increases. No, we are not. We also have the same thing on roll-off. We do make sure that we've looked at private sectors. There are some that are higher, but you have around 23 to 25 other private haulers in the city. And a lot of them are smaller. You have a couple major ones, but those smaller ones, you know, they'll watch us and see what we're doing and try to be competitive with us. So we do, we do make sure to watch that and see where we're bumping up against it. Most importantly, we do have to cover cost of service. But yeah, it's something that we look at. And, and right now, we, we feel comfortable with these rates.
All right, perfect.
Mr. Freeman. So the operating cost is $6.2 million higher forecasted for this year, for the next year. What, what's made that, why is that much higher? Is it because of the tipping fees or primarily? Did I miss that?
That's okay. Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, because I was wondering, fleet maintenance is a big key, I'm sure. Getting the fleet and keeping it up and running. But the landfill charges, but even looking at the forecast out in the future, I mean, for projected in '25, '26, and '27, it kind of is relatively stable, but then it jumps up again by another couple million for three years out, four years out.
Mayor. Yeah, Councilmember Freeman. Yes, we do, we do anticipate a dip in our fleet maintenance costs starting in '25, '26, because we're going to start getting newer trucks in, which would reduce our, our maintenance that we'll have to provide. But then again, trucks will start getting older then, and we'll anticipate more fleet.
Just like the rest of us.
Higher maintenance.
Are we still leasing trucks too, to keep up with deliveries and?
Yes, Councilmember Freeman, we are.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, yeah. Yeah. But we're, we have a plan. We may be getting some sooner than later. So that's good.
Yeah.
It's been a tough year.
Yeah, I, I saw one burning on the Loop 202 a few, about a month or so ago. Did we defer maintenance to that? You don't have to answer that question. I'm just making a point. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, I think that's what we'll wrap up for today. And then we'll come back next week and finish off energy resources.
All right. Thank you. That was a great start. Item two on our agenda is to acknowledge receipt of various meeting minutes. Is there a motion to object? Thank you, Mr. Summers and Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you. That passed unanimously. Next is current events and conferences attended. Councilmembers, anything you'd like to share with us? Mr. Freeman. Civilists attended the community, Police Department Community Breakfast this past week at the Post. It was really nice. The Mesa Police Safety Foundation. And then the East Valley Partnership luncheon too, we attended. All right. Anything else you'd like to share, Council? All right. Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
We'll see you on Thursday. More utility discussions.
Look forward to it. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Summers. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.